The house, so we need a house to run from it.
All right, well, thank you very much for the assistance. Thank you to Dan too for. And I'm honest. All right, so our recess is over at seven oh eight. So we had, we, we to focus on the Zoom call, we had some difficulty with the technology here. So the only thing that that we've done so far is the roll call and the approval of the bid in the August nineteen meeting. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Which we're gonna open. Good evening, I am Paul Companmaller, Chair of the City of Ratten Plan and Exonia Commission. And I'm opening the public hearing for special for site plan number five zero six. Special permit number four seven six lot combination number two five dash zero zero one L L R. DLC Engineering Services LLC. Or Zero Sacred Heart Drive, one forty Perquonic Road, and one fifty Perquonic Road. It's combined to combine lots, construct a multi-family structure of twenty units. Consolidate access and repurpose mixed-use buildings. The purpose of this public hearing is for the commission to receive input from the applicants, proponents, opponents, and all interested parties or citizens who wish to comment on the aforementioned application. It is important to note that once this application was received by the commission, no member of the commission may comment on or discuss this application with any other member of the commission, the applicant, the applicant's agent, member of the public or interested party, except during the public hearing proceedings. Once the hearing is closed, commission members may only discuss this application with commission members during deliberations. Are there any questions about that? All right, hearing done, the public hearing for site plan number five zero six, special permit number four seven six, lot combination number two five dash zero zero one L L R is open. All right, Leslie, is there, there is additional information required, correct? You want to comment on that, please?
Yes, I've. We did not yet get the elevations for the buildings. So this is being continued, the applicants requested that this be continued to.
All right. All right, so our October meeting is scheduled for the twenty first. All right, so is there a motion to continue the public hearing for site plan number five zero six, special permit number four seven six, lot combination number two five dash zero zero one L L R? Until our next meeting, our next scheduled meeting on October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Motion by Mrs. Water. It's your second? Second from Ms. Bergeron, all those in favor of continue the continuing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, the motion to continue the public hearing is approved four zero zero. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda. Regular meeting, this is, this is application for a site plan number five zero seven, C A M number three three nine, Boston O'Neal. And as, as the agent for Pfizer Incorporated for forty-five Eastern Point Road. This is demo for demolition of building one sixty-two, removal of the fuel oil storage tank and removal of the firewater tank. So I will open this to the applicant and this, this fellow?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Um, good evening, I'm Lauren Miller, lights and siblings here in state of Connecticut, Boston O'Neal, and representing Pfizer tonight. Um, I'm here to present the fuel oil storage tank or post firewater tank in building north sixty-two demolition project in consideration. Um, as an overview, Pfizer is proposing to demolish the two large tanks in one small utility building at their four forty-five Eastern Point Road. Um, or their west campus parcel. The project is located in the northwest corner of the property, immediately adjacent to the Buckeye Terminal property. The total building structure demolition for those three structures is a thousand four hundred square feet. Um, the first tank is just under nine thousand square feet, the firewater tank is just over two thousand square feet, and building B one sixty-two is four hundred and ten square feet in that area for that breakdown. The two tanks were decommissioned about ten years ago and have since remained empty. Um, and the utility building contains operating equipment for the post, um, it is no longer requiring from campus operations with the removal of the post tank. Um, Pfizer's goal of removing these structures is part of their ongoing effort to improve their campus and ensure efficient use of space and resources. Um, for site details that are included in the application, um, you know that Pfizer is located within the industrial technology zone. The project area is about three quarters of an acre. Uh, the entire project area is within the one hundred year flood zone with a one percent annual chance of flood hazard. And the area has a base flood elevation of, uh, elevation twelve per female. Um, to give you an idea, the average grade of this area is about nine on a female elevation. The site is separated from the theme shoreline by rocky burn. And erosion ceramic control, linear protections like silt socks or silt fence will, will be placed more less than thirty-five feet in the shore's waterline, uh, to protect the site. Or to protect the veins from sedimentation from the site during construction. Um, for demolition, um, pre-demolition environmental investigations and construction planning is already underway. Um, the tanks, as I said, are empty, um, and the building, um, has been powered down all the utility systems. Uh, the construction sequence will first start with installation of erosion sediment controls, followed by disconnection and abandonment of utilities. Uh, then the building demolition will start with interior stripping and structural breakdown. Um, materials will be sorted first, will be sorted on-site for recycling, reuse, or disposal. Um, and they will be transported by the preset haul route that's included on our plant T M P and our plant size. Um, and that's always I ninety-five, this is very similar to the route that came in two with and then third, um, the B one eighty-five process, same. Um, after the building and tanks are dismantled, the site will be leveled, graded, and compacted. Foundations will be either left in place or removed, and soil will be brought in a spill as needed to pack those foundation voids. The tank slabs will be broken up and removed in an environmentally responsible way. Um, utilities will be capped, extracted, or filled as required, most of them will be abandoned or left in place. Um, and then finally, the area will be restored with Connecticut D O three, D O T number three stone for stabilization, it's about like two-inch stone. Um, and that map is the G six campus areas that's still surfacing. Uh, once the site is full and stabilized, the Russian controls will be removed, and that follows the Connecticut Russian settlement control guidelines. Um, from the environmental side of things, uh, we submitted a natural diversity database request, um. And that came back, came back to us indicating there are six aquatic animal species in the veins near the site. Um, however, their review concluded that the site and the project do not, and, um, will likely not have significant negative impact to the species because of the project. Uh, and then throughout the project best management practices, like the silt, uh, silt fence I mentioned will be employed, um, to protect that shoreline. For hazardous materials, the post and the one sixty-two small building were surveyed for asbestos in twenty fourteen. Asbestos was found in some of the post's mastic coffee materials. The post and the water tank were surveyed with P C Bs, um, just recently, um, since we submitted the application, uh, so twenty twenty-five. And there's P C Bs suspected of the coffee materials as well. Um, if I was just contracting with my company, Boston O'Neal, to conduct a full hazardous materials inspection prior to the building demolition, that will include asbestos inspection, lead paint service testing, or sorry, lead-based paint service testing. Um, P C B material sampling and underlying soil sampling under the tanks that they're calling up. Um, for so meal, we will be providing Pfizer with an inspection report with the lab findings and recommendations that Pfizer will give to the contractor um, for them to follow, uh, for handling impact and contaminant materials during construction. Um, so tonight, we're in front of you seeking a major site plan modification on cam approval. Um, and then following these approvals, we, we will, I should say, the contractor will be submitting up to the building department for a demolition permit. Again, this is very similar to the one eighty-five, um, that we just got from. Um, so that's the summary for the project, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but I do have a set of plans.
Thank you, uh, Steph, questions, comments?
I just have a couple of questions in favor. So you're gonna put, the stones are gonna be the final layer of what it's called, yeah, yes. Why is that better with landscaping?
Um, it just matches the rest of the campus in the area, um, right now Pfizer is considering that space to be used for storage and I can't say what they'll do with it in the future, but it is like over the down area or stop surface and wash it off, okay.
That was really. And that's efficient for version, yes, what was really me too? The two places, just wanted to clear.
Uh, you said that the, uh, there were some, there were some facilities that were being left in place. Uh, and I thought you described it as perhaps some of the conduit or piping between the post and the building or, okay. Um, will any fuel oil remain in those pipes or is it all been removed?
All the fuel oil has been removed, there is one pipe that actually directly connects Buckeye Terminal to the first tank, and that is above grade, and that will be approved with respect to the Buckeye Terminal property. Or beyond, if Buckeye Terminal wants access to them too.
It's major concerns for transporter has waste from the area through the, the path that you described are P C Bs and asbestos and perhaps.
Other questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone? Um, so, so I took a few questions, so we're gonna, you're gonna check for soil contamination after the demo is complete, correct?
It'll be after the structure is taken down, um, and it'll be during concurrently with the slabs being removed. Um, we'll go out and do some more soil testing to see what's actually under the slabs, because there's no way of getting to them, of course, until the building's down, or the tanks come down.
All right. About stormwater, so, so what, there was a, can you briefly describe the stormwater impacts from this?
Yeah, um, everything has proposed conditions will match existing. Um, right now, the majority of the area is covered by those two, those two caves, um, the building's very small, um. And by removing those, you take away the, the previous area, by replacing the stone, it is previous, um, so it kind of offsets that, um, that large area of hard surface, um, and it allows for enough infiltration to match, uh, the existing flows and proposed conditions, so there's no change in spits accident in both, both situations.
So, so the stormwater analysis was, was performed?
Yep, yes, it was, yeah, it's included in the, um, evaluation.
Right, and it concluded that there would be no additional runoff, was that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and also, I thought I read, I read in the application that we've been narrating that some area was gonna be seeded?
Um, it may have mentioned that, and I, I believe the intent was if there was any kind of disturbance to adjacent areas, um, during construction, whether it was from construction equipment or lay-down areas, uh, those, if they were currently seeded, they would be seeded, that was the intent there.
Okay, so it wasn't the exact seed area of the area that was under the tanks of the building?
That's correct.
The, uh, uh, let's see, what else am I missing?
Yeah, it's about the dry well.
Oh, yeah, good, please do.
Um, the, the dry well has been, is, uh, will be left permanently, or is that during the?
That's permanently, um, there's a low spot there in existing conditions, and it's very flat, and we don't want the water going back into that, um, other nearby small buildings, so it's really just a another way to get water quickly into the ground without the storm.
So the, the, the overall stormwater flow is towards the river, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
So, so will there, will there be any storm drains or anything like that installed?
No, no storm drains, the, the dry well is really just a stone pit, um, wrapped in filter fabric, so there's no problems with it. Uh, but because we're naturally keep flows, um, we get, we get out in other, um, structures are taking to like divert it and bring it to another spot.
Are, are there currently storm drains in that, in that area that carry the water to the river?
Not in the area of work, um, immediately adjacent, there are quite a few catch bases, um, there is a swell, and it's, it's kind of funky, it's like a over that, uh, passage depression and plus the catch basin, but, um, that's adjacent to the project area as well. That's going to be protected with, uh, linear controls, I believe it was silt fence on the plan, and all the catch basins adjacent to the project area and where we will leave, um, truck routing will be, will be fitted with, uh, filter fabric, um, during construction.
Right, just to, just to confirm that the truck routing is out, out the west campus gate?
Yes.
Onto Eastern Point Road, down to Rainville, and then Rainville to the Route three to, well, to, to Florence B. Shore Highway and then to Interstate ninety-five?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
So there, there won't be any, um, any, any traffic through residential areas? All right, um, any, any special work hours or is this generally gonna be constructed, gonna, demolition work gonna be done during the day?
Yes, during the day, um, I, there was no discussion about, um, night shift or, uh, you know, second or third shifts with Pfizer. Um, in the corner of where this is on the property, so there's no residential areas. Uh, so I know there's a concern for B one eighty-five, but I don't see that half air worth it to do low being on, on dust.
Right, yeah, where's Lafayette, there's no, there's no. Um, anybody else have any questions?
I, I almost think that this demolition will improve stormwater runoff to that, to both sides here, at least, at least while the, uh, the gravel surface fully drained, so. As, as long as nothing is found under the you know, the concrete areas, no surprises from years of, they have been under concrete. I think the, the plan is solid and the right, the right consideration for the fair.
Uh, anybody else?
That, that bring up, um, I saw on the plan that there is an existing water monitoring well, I think, yes, is that, um, is that active?
It's active, yep, they do test them in there, and now we're living in their village, protected during construction.
Question for Leslie, do you think, I mean, should, this report that's kind of generated on the testing, the contamination testing following that done, but all of the taking for the, the build, the structure style, right? Uh, should we make that, or should we require that report as a condition of approval?
That it be submitted to us.
That be submitted to us, because I am, I don't read, I don't see anywhere where, I don't know anything else to commit. Not, not, not that I don't, because Boston O'Neal advised, but, but, um. Okay, so we'll, we'll, you know, if we approve this, we'll make that a condition that, um, that we receive them, the what, 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 what is this actually gonna be, if this is a soil contamination, any Florida? How, how would you, how would you describe it?
I would, I would call it a hazardous materials assessment. Um, yeah, I think a hazardous materials assessment would be, let's see.
That would include any new discovery of B five eight?
Um, B five eight. Sorry, B five eight is, uh, going toward the main.
Oh, B one six two.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yes, yeah, it'll include the, uh, one sixty-two.
They'll take down B five eight on my suggestion.
It's, it's rated immediately, Jesus, so it's a little, from there, yeah, no, it'll include all three structures in front of it.
All right, um, before, uh, before we go any further, I, you know, I, I neglected to start to, to mention at the, uh, beginning of our discussion that I'm, uh, I'm retired from Pfizer, but I no longer have any financial or other relationship with the company, so that, that will impact my decision in this, that. Anybody else have anything, or we? Is there a motion to approve? With the condition that hazardous materials assessment report we provide to the city at leasing of the project?
I move we accept site plan five zero seven, cam three three nine. With the condition that the hazardous material report we provided to the city planner could building.
Um, they're fine. Building anyway.
Okay, the city planner. On completion.
Is there a second?
I just asked for a digital copy as well. Okay.
All right, motion by Mr. Rusk, second by Mrs. Water. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, all right, the site plan five, number five oh seven, and cam number three three nine is approved four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that.
All right, uh, what's that? Sorry?
North Street, thirty-sixth Street.
Um, sure, we can, um, we have some, uh, Leslie received some communication on thirty-six North Street, both from Barbara Nagy and from David Preka. So, um, but there was a request from Mr. Preka to, to consider, um, uh, well, Leslie's got it on, but I think we should just, go ahead.
I move that we suspend the rules and add this, uh, item to the agenda.
All right, so we're gonna have discussion on thirty-six North Street to the agenda, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, all right, we're adding thirty-six North Street discussion. All right, Leslie, wanna follow soon?
Sure, um, I got an email from, I, I've been in contact, uh, since the last mission meeting, when the commission charged me with working with Mr. Preka to make sure that the, uh, treatment for the chain link fence met with uh, with my approval on the property commission. And so that was, so I've worked with him, um, been out there several times to, to take a look, he did give me a sample of, of something that he was thinking about putting up, and I took this out to the site and held it up against the chain link fence, and unfortunately, when it's in the sun, you can see right through it, it doesn't have any, um, blocking features, so you can't even really see the design either, and then from the back, it's just white, it actually is completely fixed, that's all he said, so. Um, so Mr. Craig and I have been talking back and forth, he suggested that I look at a different, um, type of fence covering that he has on a different project, checking out, uh, and took a look at that, and my concern about that one was that it was while you could see through it, it was better than, than this sample, but it was, my concern is I don't want to have a situation where we have to go back to your feet now because the material has gotten beaten up and there are holes in it, or it's torn, or whatever, um. And Mr. Craig agreed that he did not want that, that happen either, so, um, in the meantime, he is looking for something else that would suffice. With that, he sent me an email that says, um, would you be able to ask the commission to allow me to proceed with the permit for constructing the canopy with the building efficient? We can work together to address the fence privacy concerns, as I am willing to collaborate with you and the commission on this matter, I greatly appreciate this, as it would allow us to park our vehicles properly. We'll go, go and hear it back from you, thanks, Steve. I would take that, the rest to you.
All right, any comments from commissioners or questions about this?
There. Well, we, we just covered in our review of the minutes that the condition that required prior to commencing installing the canopy were the as-built site plan and, uh, and screen. So I, I think we should stick with that, my recommendation, that, uh, we, we continue to require that as the condition prior to installation of canopy. I know that there are a number of ways to go about it, and, uh, I'm sure that, you know, reasonable, uh, screening material can be obtained. I don't, I don't think that we, I, I mean, I agree that the sample provided isn't, isn't really a good screen, I don't think it meets the intent. Um, I don't want to see us in a, you know, haggling with, uh, Mr. Preka about the material exactly. If it's, if it's something that requires replacement or maintenance, that's really of the owner. You know, if there were like a tarpwood promise or something along those lines, that it could be affixed to the fence that provided a good screen. Uh, you know, just like any other property, if it, if it's clobbered after a few seasons, it's just a matter of maintenance, so. I think there are probably options that don't require so much maintenance, but it's, it's kind of his choice. I think there are probably options that don't require so much maintenance, but it's, it's kind of his choice, as long as it meets the intent of the screening department that we put out. Right, right, which is, you know, with the screen requirement that was, you know, it, it, it needs to pass muster with less than.
And, any other comments?
When we decide to do the screening, it's in order to follow what was supposed to be the land to be intended for, and say, right, I would. I guess in principle, I think we should stick to what we said, yeah, you know, prior to the same further work, we need to address prior work, but I am concerned that the methods from me will end up being something that looks towards that, what it does now, I guess, uh, because right now the site is really to me and the fence is truly nice, and so I would rate them like each other or sort of, uh, thing which is become worse, uh, so I just wanted to bring that to the commission as a concern. But that might just be state of affairs.
Discretion, you think?
Um, I have to agree that a lot of it looks attractive at this point, and having done my due diligence, I stopped at the site, and, uh, if you look down to the left when you come into the city, the only spot that would need any taken care of is, when you look down at the end, it's only up until there's a white birch tree, and, and there's a small section right here that needs to block the materials from behind that, the rest of it, like Colleen said, Colleen said, that's it. Uh, the black fence is not unattractive, and there's some grass down at that area, and that would fall within the twenty-five feet. So you don't need to, uh, do anything to that section, and it's presentable to when you come into the city. The rest of it probably needs to have something done, but the concern is like everyone else. It needs to be something that's going to enhance the area. There's a small section between the two buildings when you come into the city that needs to be handled also, but he's in a business construction and improvements, where I would think he would readily be exposed to any type of fencing coverage, and shouldn't have much trouble finding one that would be suitable. So I agree, I think the parts that need to be covered should be covered, and I think the work should wait until that's finished, so.
All right, um, I guess I, I would just add that, so, so he's also, we also need the as-built site plan for the current. Correct, we, we received that yet or?
Correct, we s- received a version of it, it was a, uh, it's an as-built of the fencing. Because everything else was there, but it doesn't show everything else. Uh, be honest, I haven't seen it as built like that before, uh, it doesn't do what's existing, particularly since it's meant to be the to jump you off point for the existing conditions for the next phase.
Right, building and footing.
And it doesn't, it's also supposed to show the retaining wall and where, what, what area's been is, you know, I mean, because there's been some, some, uh, previous, um, was it it's from milled pavement that's been spread there, correct, I mean, I think that's
Yeah.
That's what this, but, I mean, all that should have shown on that as built as well, so, so we don't have the, we don't have the, we don't have, uh, an acceptable as-built at this point, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so there's, there's two things, and I think, you know, I guess, based on, on history here, you know, we need to make sure that, that, uh, what we want, what we're requiring is actually gets done. And, you know, and we have to use what, uh, what leverage we have to try to ensure that, so.
I, I, you know, I think that, uh, Mr. Preka would agree that the, the commission, uh, compromised in his favor with, uh, we, we knew he wasn't gonna work a miracle and grow, uh, big, beautiful screened trees where, where they can't grow, and, uh, and that we can only expect so much perhaps screening of the type of facility that is, but, uh, I really think that, um, he would not want to be in a position where there's no existing as-built site plan, uh, there's questions about whether this or that has been done or not done. I, I've really thought that this was an opportunity to reset the clock on history, uh, and, and, and step off on the right foot, you know, with his, his desire to have a working relationship with, uh, planning and zoning, and I, I, we want that, so I, I think we, we need to hold to this, you know, pretty reasonable requirement, to square away the requirements that we, we set when we agreed to the site plan, which is existing site plan that, that resets the clock on what's there, uh, in, in its entirety, the entire site as-built. And, uh, and I think the screening, once, once we get through that, that, I think we can, we can defend, you know, uh, you know, future leeway, but, but future leeway and other things can't, can't happen, if, if we're still waiting for, you know, this original request.
Okay, go ahead.
I do think we should, you know, also focus on the fact, which when we looked at the pictures that came through the email, it was quite evident when you looked at what it used to look like to what it looks like now, it's a huge improvement, but, um, yeah, I think we need to stick with what has opened on.
I agree.
Okay, sounds like we've got consensus here, it just doesn't require our vote, because we've already literally approved conditions, so.
Thank you.
All right, Alan, but there was, you, you also had some, um, which gives up communication from Barbara Nagy, right, about?
Yes, which I did pass up, I guess, I do so, and I've sent also the spots.
Okay, so, so this was more, again, about landscaping?
Yeah, it was, you can discuss the issue of plastics, uh, I think like there was a little bit of a misconception maybe, um, that just because grass is growing, grass is very low root base, and so there are, well, there are some things that can grow that, uh, shrubs, uh, vines that would not be considered invasive. Even bolts, you could put in just something like that, it really is ledge. And so it makes it difficult, which is unfortunate, because I think we would all prefer to see the more clematis or roses or something, uh, but, uh, but that is what the, that is what the situation is, right? On that.
All right, um, they, they go to you, you know, questions, your comments about, about that. All right, um, next item on the agenda is bylaws review and possible amendments. Does anybody have anything in the bylaws that they, they gotta be changed or updated?
No, in fact, I, I, I realized that, uh, it misplaced my coffee, so is that, do you have a PDF that they could send that for me sometime? Appreciate that.
All right, so well, no, none proposed at this time. All right, discussion of possible zoning regulation amendments to section seven. Uh, Leslie, you wanna jump off of this?
Yeah, let's go on.
Yeah. I will resend it all. I think technically standards, and it's, it's, yeah, in section seven, which is the standard section, which is, uh,
It's a lot of, it's a lot of the signage. This is, we, this is one of the, this is one of the sections we brought off to, well, before we started on general commercials.
So basically, the, the goal of the signage is to make sure that there are several bits in there, but the sort of most important, one is that signs have at least one sign, if it's a commercial sign, um, would have the house number, the address number, in like a six-inch sign so that it can be seen, uh, it's just kind of a standard thing, most places don't require it, I think most of the decisions take without wings, and so it can be proximate to other, a mailbox or the primary entrance.
So, so six inches seems pretty, pretty big.
It's actually not, when you're standing back, I mean, it's really, it's actually a bad. It's no, it would, it would be for everybody, but primarily for businesses, if businesses have signs outside. So, for instance, a law office might have, you know, they're laying across, but they should also have the, a street number. Street number doesn't. Buffer, but just so that it is easier and safer for both drivers to figure out where they're going, how many places they have to go further. Uh, are they on the right side, or are they looking on the right side of the street, also for emergency vehicles.
But, but would it also apply to residences, I mean, in, you know, in, you know, every, every?
Six inches, but it's I definitely wanted your input on that, so I would get it. When you said, first said it though, I immediately stared, they put out the words on my mailbox, six inches, so.
Those, those are two inches.
Yeah, they're all over the lot, some of them are those little reflectors, they stay on over the. Some of them are a little larger, um, but at least for, if you have a, a higher sign to look at sort of faster, to get a sense of where you are. We have done that, um, with that, uh, regulations elsewhere, and I have not heard a single.
Seems very standard and perfectly reasonable, especially when you think about emergency vehicles.
Trying to remember, but it's, there is a code that requires it. Now I can't remember if it was just another city code that I read.
So, so, uh, I'm sorry. I, I can cut you off, come on, um, so what, what I see is in, it's the, the way this is worded, it says, address number shall be no more than six inches when measured, so, six inches is the max. Okay, so that's just. Right, that's, that's, that was my understanding too, so, but the way it's written, it says, it's no more than six inches, so that doesn't. I, go ahead.
I was, in thinking of what Jason said about the emergency vehicles, should there be no less, no less than? So in the, uh, manual for uniform traffic control devices, there is sizes based on speed of the road, uh, from eight inches is, I think, the largest for a street sign. So that's just, just their scale, uh, that, that would be the force by law, so residential area is a twenty-five.
But this is saying six inches is the max, so should we say no less than three inches? Because it is an, an issue of emergency vehicle. I, I just know with my house, the mailbox is across the street, there's good size numbers on it, and people still don't know that's mine house, because we don't associate that mailbox with Michael's.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm very, what I.
I'm excited to learn about the advancements for the manual uniform traffic control devices.
I'm impressed that you know all these. I would mostly look at that.
So what, I was, I went through this, uh, couple, um, couple before, several weeks ago, for some other meeting. Might have been on the agenda, I have some comments that I sent you.
Okay.
So you're gonna go through it. And it shuts us out.
I will send out the, I will send out what I've said before to everyone, and then I will so you can all go through them, and I will send out other copy with your notes and anybody else's notes that you get that so that we can fully discuss it next month, I have a much, next month's been feel like since we have
There's a, that's a big application.
That's a big application, almost, yeah. So I'd make yeah.
Well, it's assuming that it's, it's ready to view.
Yes.
Which it knows so. God, like it's not best. So, this is city of Charleston, just a city that I used to work in, um, they're waiting samples. They, they say numerals not less than three inches in height on buildings utilized for residential purposes, not less than four inches on buildings utilized for other purposes, and the, they also require that the color of the numerals be contrasted whatever. Right. Leslie, I, I found that, you know, with the signage, um, and other than that, the rose request, is there anything else you want us to specifically look at?
Um.
But if you, let me please, as you, when we send the email.
Okay, yeah, I don't know both major changes. Things that I think we need to discuss.
I guess that, you know, the, you had sent me a message that, um, in addition to the, to the sign regulations that um, you know, to discuss the possibility of adding the lower general commercial into our discussions about the five quarters.
I'm so glad I sent you that.
So.
One to my memory.
So, so, so you wanna give us the background there?
So, um, there are we're getting a lot of chatter from developers who are really interested in doing some interesting things. Now I say that with a little bit of hesitation because I, I'm not talking about any existing applications. And I'm not talking about like seeing any planes. Sales pitchy kind of thing that I get. And these are developers who I have worked in city before and I'm familiar with some other projects. They did great conversations, mostly regulations, force it, call every month. So at any rate, that there is definitely interest. There are have nothing to do with any of this, but there are, uh, developers who have been looking at properties to purchase. And develop. So those are in looking at the southern or central part of the city. The southern part could really be more their single family homes. And the golf course in this part. But the areas around Lower Thane Street, five corners, uh, I'm wondering if it makes more sense to look at the lower GC area as part of the regulations that we're looking at in the WBR and five corners. To just see if it makes more sense for those to be congruous. Just to be. And make sure that what we're doing is something that bless those areas.
So when you're talking about the lower, the lower GC, okay, can you?
I would talk about the area that is where companies is, where rail farms is. And across the street, um, uh, electric boat on Lower Thane's where race catering used to be and there are a couple of blocks.
So, so, okay. So, so more than that. Looking more at the area around EB rather than the, the GC zone to the, the north end.
Correct.
Where we've already.
Oh, no.
So, 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 okay. So I just wanted to make, just to clarify what, what exactly.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
You were saying that that zone, that, that portion of the GC ought to be in line with the regulations of the warming.
I'm saying we, we may keep it a separate zone, but we ought to be cognizant of what we're doing, of what changes we might be changing, we might be making or proposing in that area because it's also the one area that allows for more martial. It doesn't have to become one of those others.
Right, no, no. I mean, I, I think, I think we did take that into, into consideration with being very careful not to, uh, write out things from the remaining GC, which included the southern area.
Correct.
But in the, in the northern area that we were proposing regulations for, we were very careful to not write something out of that portion of the GC, though that portion of the GC was almost exclusively residential. We were careful to leave those existing, especially accessory uses in that were already in place and in, in effect in the lower, the southern part of the GC. So that we didn't make those non-compliant. You know, use the parking lot on as an accessory use, uh, a couple of business, business cases. You know.
So I'm not looking to change that. I'm not looking to put things in, take things out that are currently allowed or not allowed.
So what are we talking about then?
So, but there are other aspects of the regulations. So if somebody wants to build and making sure that they're constructing something and it is, it's in line with the the signage set back, uh, making sure that there are, I've just I wanna be sure that those areas blend well. And are not, I guess I just, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that we have this row area that is made its own, was what's given so much attention, but based upon the sites of.
But so, so, I mean, so, so essentially it's, it, it's just, it's adjacent really to, to the WBR and the five corners. So that, that, oh, that small commercial section there, we ought to think about that in terms of like add that into the picture and look at that. What we wanna do in that area.
And we may not change.
Well, I understand. I just, that's basically what you're suggesting.
Right.
I think it's, it's right, it's right there. So we should gather it sometime. And I mean, just as an example, the way the regulations currently stand in that, that commercial zone, it's still limited to two dwelling units per person.
Yep.
So.
The GC.
Then that, yeah, then that, then that GC. So, so maybe there are any, we never, we don't pay any changes to that. So again, that can be said to the.
Well, right. And, and our focus was on the other part.
Right.
Rest of GC.
Right.
And, and we, so we were very careful to leave that little remaining bit and not affect the southern part. But when we go to address WBR and the five corners, it, it may make sense to, uh, to, uh, change that area, combine it, as long as we don't, again, write out the existing loud uses of things. But, but like you said, you know, it was, could really be the goal, you know, setbacks. That we, we make that, uh, a lot of justification for combining. So.
Yeah. So, so, so I mean, I think that, that simply makes sense to, to jump into that. You know, in, in, in discussion.
Right now, just setting the table for the discussion, suggesting that we make sure we keep this. I, I think it would be very proactive because if we know people are looking to do things, then let's let them know what there is and let's look at that and try and head before somebody just comes along and says, oh, I want to build this. And it's not gonna match with everything else that there or could be there. So just, you know, looking at what do we want there? What do we want that area to look like? So that, you know, these builders don't do pretty much anything you want. If it's cost effective. If they know what you want. That's the big thing is they don't know what we want at this.
Well, and I will tell you that on standard answer, when people come in with that question is I, I won't answer that question. And I tell them very clearly that they are you, your property, you are allowed to build on your property wherever is allowed in the regulations. I am not absolutely not going to say we need more
Restaurants.
Restaurants. I'm not going to say we need more this, we need more that. Those are things, that those are the responsibility of the property owner. And these are her agent to figure out themselves.
I would just hate to see somebody come in and wanna build something and can't do it because of the current regulations. Yet when we look at it in the future, they could have done it.
Well, unfortunately we have that is sort of the case. So appeal is resolved. So we got a space in some areas, but we've never, we've actually.
But there, but there was a, in terms of that, there, there was a postponement, a sub-type in the
Who was that?
In that, in the P L case.
I know it's the middle's word.
Yeah, there was a, there was a, there was a postponement.
Yes, yes.
Legal case.
Yes. There was not, no status complaints with that. Judge Shapiro this month. It's expected to be out. That it's been scheduled.
So that's, that's the only update on.
Yeah.
On that situation. Anything else?
All of you. Do it either way of those.
So.
For the regulations.
Section seven.
Yeah.
In the area that we just talked about also.
Yes, I will say I would make a note to send about.
All right. Anything else? Anybody have anything else? Any computer comments or questions? Um, we don't have the executive session, so, uh, votes are adjourned.
I say.
Motion from Mr. Rusk, second from Mrs. Lockrow. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right. Four, zero, zero, and eight oh eight.